Internet a little while ago.
Yeah, so I hopefully that that issues those issues don't come up.
Right. Okay, so let's get started. I'm Janet Anderson. And I'm calling to order the the town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Before I go any further, I'm going to confirm that Kirsten has started recording.
Hi.
This meeting is happening via Zoom with live streaming to YouTube on the Lewisboro TV channel. That link to the TV channel on YouTube has been provided to the public so that they can view the meeting. And we have confirmed that the feed is active and working. Note that in accordance with the governor's executive orders, no one is at our usual meeting location at 79 Bowton. And I have confirmed with Kirsten that who is our planning board administrator that the meeting has been duly noticed. Legal notice requirements have been fulfilled. Notice was placed on the town of Lewisboro website, included in email distributions from the town and the library. And it has been posted on Facebook to Lewisboro citizens. So with me. So. And maybe this is a reminder to tell people to mute and when they are not part of the active conversations. With me on the Zoom conference from the town of Lewisboro are members of the planning board Jerome Kerner, Greg LaSorsa, Maureen McGuire, Rich Clarin, and me. So we do have a quorum, and so we are able to vote on any matters that come before the board. Our consultant Jan Johannesen and Council Judson Seabird are here, the planning board administrator, Kirsten Conrad, and the CAC Chair John Wolf. So these continue to be uncertain and stressful days. So we, the planning board, are continuing to function on behalf of the town. The governor's executive order number 202 dot 1 enables us to meet remotely and electronically. In accordance with the executive order, we intend to post both the recording and later a transcript of this meeting to the town website. And of course, actions will be documented in the meeting minutes. So we do ask for everyone's patience as we learn this new system and procedure. We do not have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. We do not expect to take public comments. And so we have not invited the public to call into the meeting on Zoom. The public can see and hear this meeting live on Lewisboro TV YouTube channel. And so one of the things about Zoom is we do need to ask people who are not currently engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. And this will help everyone hear over the inevitable background noises. I should remind you that we will do our best, we need to do our best to avoid crosstalk. So when we vote, I will also make sure that I poll all the board members individually. And I ask Kirsten to help me follow this process. So thanks, everybody, in advance for their understanding and participation as we keep learning this process. So let's get started. The first item of the of our agenda is calendar number 0120 PB, which is Greenway Market at 20 North Salem Road, Cross River, New York. And this is an application for the waiver of site development plan procedures for installation of a cart corral and bottle return. So I think Benjamin, earlier you mentioned that you would like to respond to some of the comments that you had seen.
Yes, I would. At the last hearing, a number of comments were actually made. I did send a letter in earlier to Kirsten indicating the response to these comments. I'll just run through them very quickly if I may. The first comment was that in the cart corral, there was concern that the carts could roll back out of the cart corral into the driveways where the major automobile automobile traffic is. I went to the site and checked this. Actually, the the driveway canvas from the center down on both sides. So that there is actually a pitch down into the cart corral. And it's just not feasible that any of the carts would actually roll back. The second point that was raised was there was some concern as to the structure and the materials used in the cart corral. There was concern that an automobile might at some time actually drive into the cart corral. And they wanted to know that the structure was actually quite sturdy. I did send in the specification from the manufacturer. The balustrade is actually made from square steel tubing. And it is actually very strong. And the black finish is actually baked on painted finish, which is also especially useful for outdoor use. So this is almost as strong as one can possibly anticipate. It is actually specially manufactured, or specifically this type of use. The next question was that downstairs, we with the recycling container is that we didn't block the actual sidewalk. I went back and I checked the field dimensions on this. The sidewalk itself is 10 foot 1 inches deep. And there's a clear dimension of 5 foot 9 inches from the front of the container to the end of the sidewalk. There is absolutely no blocking of any traffic in this particular area. So even if you had automobile parking and you allowed an extra 2 feet for the automobile to park and to overhang the sidewalk, you still have almost 4 feet clear for anyone to walk through. And the last item were the actual digital projection screens. Futon Supermarket, which is actually directly involved in this with Greenway Market, have these identical projection screens in a number of their supermarkets. I went to the supermarkets at Hastings on Hudson and also in West Avenue in the Bronx. The projection screens measure 2 foot 7 inches in width by 4 foot 7 inches in height. They are 3 inches thick. And I took some photographs of the existing screens. They permit a constant change of image. So that if whatever product they are trying to actually project can can be constantly changed. I showed some photographs of these, which I included. Those were the questions that were raised in the previous hearing. And those are the responses to those questions.
Okay, I think we do have a resolution. Jan, do you want to go through that resolution?
Sure. So a resolution for a minute site plan approval for Orchard Square Shopping Center, in particular, the Greenway Market, located at 20 North Salem Road in the RB zoning district. The property is about 5.4 acres owned by EK Cross River LLC. The applicant Greenway Market is a grocery store, which is currently in operation. Grocery stores are principal permitted use in that zoning district. The applicants proposing to install two shopping cart corrals within two existing parking spaces in the upper parking lot. They're also proposing the installation of what we refer to as RVM vending machines or reverse vending machines, which are bottle can and glass recycling machines on the lower level on an existing sidewalk adjacent to the building. There is a current parking space deficiency from a zoning perspective in the shopping center. So when you look at the various uses within this shopping center and you compare them to the parking requirements in the zoning code, there's a shortfall. That's been the case for some time. With the elimination of the two parking spaces for the car corrals, makes that nonconforming condition a bit more nonconforming. The way we've dealt with that in the past on the shopping center, given the variety of uses there and their peak operating hours and peak demand, we're able to, in accordance with the code, allow for the shared use of parking spaces. So there's provisions in the resolution that allow that to occur. When you approved the site plan for this property some years ago, there was some provisions for land banking of parking spaces. So in the future, if demand required, there is an ability to expand the parking area to accommodate the shared parking spaces that you've kind of deferred at this point. Other than that, the resolution includes some conditions, some of which include comments, a response to comments from our last memo. I understand there was a submission today. We haven't reviewed that yet, but the responses from Benjamin sound positive. There is a referral to Acarc and an approval by Acarc that's made a condition. Those are really the two conditions that need to be satisfied prior to the signing of the site plan, Acarc approval and satisfactorily responding to our comments. That is it.
Okay. Does anyone, I guess, on the board have any additional comments? I do see Jerome, yes.
I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution as prepared with the understanding that the last sketches that were sent are representative of what's intended for the structure of the cart corrals.
I'll second.
Okay, that is Rich that has seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, I do think I do have one more comment, which is that one of the items that we had that had been identified by Jan earlier is that the some of the sidewalk requirements that are not requirements on Greenway so much as requirements on the shopping center owner are not are not yet remedied. And I if if maybe I think it's a little separate from this. We'll do the motion first and then I'll I'll talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah.
Condition number 10, there's and this is an item that needs to be addressed prior to the signing of the site plan. It states that the planning board chairperson shall provide a written notice to the building inspector identifying noncompliance with the previously approved site development plan. That means uncompleted items shown on the site plan of record. So I think we discussed at a prior meeting that these weren't issues really of Greenway, but more of the owner of the shopping center and to fulfill the obligations that he's got on a site plan.
Yes. So when we, if we approve this motion, then and the resolution, it would be my intention to write, to send that memo off to the building inspector. So I want, I just wanted people to be aware of that. Okay, so any further discussion before we vote? No hands raised? Okay, so Maureen, may I have your vote?
I vote in favor of adopting the resolution.
Rich.
I.
Greg.
I vote in favor.
Jerome.
I.
And I also say aye, so the motion carries. And so first, I want to say we will then sign this resolution and draft a letter and send that to the building inspector. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an extension of time for Silver Mine Preserve. Silver Mine Preserve has asked for an extension from April 13th to October 13th for approval of a site plan subdivision, sorry, wetland activity and stormwater permits for the construction of a 13 lot subdivision. Do we have anyone here on that? So we did receive a letter. The letter actually said that they are waiting on approval from the Westchester Department, Westchester County Department of Health. Obviously, the the processes are a little slowed by the COVID situation. So we did get the letter in time. We have typically extended, given a six month extension, so looking for anyone's comments on that.
Just very quickly, Jan, I do want to note that prior to tonight's meeting, the applicant's attorney did contact me to request if participation would be required. I reviewed the letter and felt that the letter was explanatory of the position and the need for additional time. And that's why they're not here.
Oh, and I think I confirmed that with you. And I did talk to most of the board members. I'm sorry. I apologize. I forgot that.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was a different different matter. Okay, so could I have a motion to extend the Silver Mine Preserve permits and?
So moved.
Thank you, Jerome. Do we have a second?
Seconds.
Seconded by Rich. Maureen, would you like to vote?
I'll vote in favor.
Rich?
I.
Greg?
I.
Jerome?
I.
And I vote aye, so the motion passes and we will have an extension of time. The next item on the agenda, I am recused from, so I am going to ask Jerome to take the lead on this matter.
So the next item is the Petroselli property on Musquelet Road, calendar 0812 PB. Extension request received by Michael Serignano. I believe Mr. Serignano is with us. Would you like to explain what's going on?
Well, we need the Board of Health to bend its rules to allow it to sign our subdivision plat in the absence of the signature of one of the two owners of the adjoining properties. And with the COVID-19 crisis, I can't get any meeting with the Board of Health, and I really can't get them to think about this. So I need some additional time.
Is there's no nontraditional alternatives in effect right now, I guess, as it pertains to this?
No, I think they have bigger issues on their plate that they're dealing with.
Okay.
So any other questions for Mrs. Serignano? You have anyone ready to make a motion now, one way or the other?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a 90 day extension of time on behalf of the Petroselli property.
Seconded by Maureen. Further questions or discussion? If none, we'll have a vote. Rich, Clarin?
I.
Maureen McGuire?
I.
Greg LaSorsa?
I.
And myself, aye. And Janet is recusing.
Yeah, I abstain.
Okay, so motion asked for extension. And do we have a period of time on that? Is that going to be 90 day? Judd?
Yeah, I believe Greg's motion was for a 90 day extension. So it's 90 days, yes.
Do we need to make any sort of a provision? They're not limited by the amount of extensions they can get, right?
No, they're not. That that limitation on the period of extensions was lifted by virtue of the change in the town law a while ago. So I mean, we've had other subdivisions that have, you know, have had repetitive extensions. We did place a condition on a prior Petroselli extension involving escrow fees, which we satisfied. So.
Because I mean, you know, I don't know if we can give a longer than 90 day extension, but I mean, in 90 days, they may or may not be able to get their answers.
Well, yeah, I you could give, I mean, you could give as with Silver Mine, which requested 180 days, we can do that here as well. And maybe that's prudent, Greg.
Yeah.
In light of what's going on.
So let me make a motion then to I don't know if you want to vacate the prior order and or amend or?
Amend it.
Okay, so let's make a motion to amend it to make that a 100, if that's acceptable to the to Mr.
It is.
Where is it? Okay, to Mike. Okay. All right, that's successful 180 then. So why don't we make that a 180 day extension of time?
So the the meeting would be October 20th, so if we made it several Friday of that previous week, perhaps.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be October 16th, I think. Seventeen, 16th or 17th. October 6, 7, 16th, yeah.
Actually, Jerome.
Yeah.
Those periods run from date of approval. And if Kirsten can confirm, I believe this it would run from April 6th, if I'm correct, Kirsten.
I would have to look it up. Your memory is better than mine.
Maybe I'm looking at.
Do you have Michael's email or does Michael?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. Yeah.
I don't have it. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, April, Monday, April 6th.
Yep.
The.
Okay.
Yes.
So it'd be October, October October 6th then, it's a Tuesday.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
And are we amending Jerome's first motion or starting over again with Greg?
Well, I think I had made the first motion and I would amend my motion to make that a 180 day extension.
Yeah, Greg made Greg made the motion.
Okay.
Executed by Maureen. So do we need to poll the board again and see if everybody's in favor of that amendment? Rich?
Still in favor, yes.
Maureen?
I.
I. Greg, of course, and myself, I'm in favor of it, yeah.
Yes.
So the motion amended to 180 days.
Okay.
And I continue to abstain, Kirsten.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so Janet, take over.
Thank you, Jerome. Okay, the next item on the agenda is is a wetland permit review for the Sawyer's Residence, Three the Hook, Waukeah Buck, New York, calendar number 0420 WP and calendar number 0120 SW, which is stormwater. So it's an application for reconstruction of the lakeside.
Did I miss something on Kingdom Hall?
Ah.
Yeah, it took that off the agenda.
It's off?
They meant their requirements.
Okay, sorry about that.
You're looking. That that had been an extension of time, but we actually got the they completed all the work before the the extension of time
Okay.
was needed. Okay, so.
So I did miss something on Kingdom Hall.
It got done. So the Sawyer's Residence is the application for reconstruction of a lakeside house and installation of a new terrace, porch, and garage. So I think we have I don't know whether, I don't know who the first person to speak on this is going to be.
I will, Janet.
Hi, Rich. Okay, so Rich Williams.
Good evening, Rich Williams with Inside Engineering. We were last before you on February 25th. This application is for the removal of an existing residence which are reconstructing on the existing foundation and increasing the impervious areas slightly. And I think it might be easiest if I just share my screen for a few minutes and review the application. What it's been a little bit of time since it was last before you. So as long as that worked, everybody should be looking at the existing conditions plan.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you recall, this is Three the Hook, which is on Lake Waukeah Buck. You can see the lake edge here. There is an existing four bedroom residence with a deck, rear stone terrace, carport, existing garage, and accessory deck. There's an existing bathhouse and deck on Lake Waukeah Buck. And you can see this line here is the existing floodplain boundary as determined from FEMA's aerial mapping. And you can see here we have our 150 foot wetland buffer, which is to the wetland that surrounds Lake Waukeah Buck. We are proposing to rebuild the existing house. We're basically going to remove the house to the foundation. I understand that might not have been clear from our last presentation. But we are taking the house down to the foundation, rebuilding it on the same footprint. I brought with us tonight Kate Platt, our architect, as well as some renderings, just to give the board a more clear picture of what we're doing. Keeping the bedroom count the same, but increasing overall the impervious by about 890 square feet or 4 and 1/2% of the building coverage to 4.6 of a permissible 9%. We're basically, we're going to infill this area here, which exists as a porch. Where the existing garage and carport area are, we're going to reconstruct those as a garage and a breezeway to the house. And then we're going to reconstruct and expand in this area portions of the deck and stone terrace. Some of the things that we talked about at the last application was we're between 5,000 square feet and an acre of total disturbance. We're at about half an acre. And what we'd like to do is repurpose the existing septic system behind the house into a stormwater infiltration area and then actually construct a new code compliance septic in the front of the house. Since we last submitted to you, we've provided a bunch more information. We responded to Keller Sessions comments, the Three Lakes Council. We provided architectural plans and details, a topographic survey, and updated wetland report, property deed. We provided the original Health Department construction permit for this property. And we submitted an NOI. Other things that we provided were slope map for the site. We also showed the approximate limits of the wetlands offsite, which appear to follow a stream channel that feeds Lake Waukeah Buck and extended the buffer. And we added the wells and septics, which, as you recall, we admitted, you know, we hadn't yet found all that information out from the Health Department. We had a comfort level where they were, but we didn't have the records. And that was something that was important with respect to us being able to relocate the septic. So we have found all the neighboring wells and septics and the septic areas we previously presented to you have not changed. Where we're at in a couple of different processes are we are talking to the building inspector as we need some zoning variances because this house was originally built to a different set of standards and setbacks. And as it exists, because we're changing the roof line, would be considered nonconforming. We do need a floodplain development permit. We have found some letters of map amendments from FEMA establishing a base flood elevation from Lake Waukeah Buck. And it is actually much less conservative than this line we've already shown. It's elevation for 73.9, so it's going to pull down below the bathhouse. We spoke to the building inspector today and he said the flooding, the floodplain development permit is really just a matter of paperwork. It's very simple since we're not filling or doing work in the wetlands and our house is so far above Lake Waukeah Buck or the floodplain. Otherwise, as far as the septic, which is really the last piece of the puzzle, we kind of sit in a holding pattern for reasons that you've heard before. Namely, due to COVID-19, the Health Department suspended all testing for new septics. So that really, as far as us continuing the septic design and doing the testing with the town is kind of holding us up at the moment. We have done preliminary testing before COVID-19 to substantiate the areas. We have provided those results, but we do still need to complete the witness testing. That's really an update. Since we were last before you, at the last meeting, the way we concluded was was there was some discussion about this potentially becoming an administrative permit, pending us submitting the additional information requested. Um, we would like to hopefully continue that conversation tonight, but is it helpful if I have Kate review renderings of the house? Or you guys wanna ask me questions?
Uh, I have a question. In light of the um, encroachment on the uh, looking what, what mature direction that is uh, the twenty-foot setback where forty-foot is required, I believe, on the uh, is that the western boundary? Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, uh, if, if the zoning board doesn't grant, grant that uh, that variance, uh, do you have any backup plans or is there? How, how rigid are you in terms of maintaining this floor plan, since it's coming down to the foundation? Is there any reason why you couldn't modify plans slightly that along that, that area? I don't know what part of the house that is, but uh, that make life any easier, and with that, and it certainly wouldn't affect any of the wetland considerations that we're involved in, so it uh, it, it's not that pressing an, an issue, but would it, would it make life easier all around?
It's the change in the roofro- roofline that is really necessitating the variance. So if the variance weren't granted, uh, we'd have to do architectural modifications to the building, and they can be accomplished. It's just not the preferred plan for the client.
I mean, the, the plan stays the same, it's just the roof pitch changes, we, we just changed the roof pitch, so we'd have to go back to the existing roof pitch.
Yeah.
If we weren't approved.
Well, you know, I think the board would agree that, you know, we're, we're, we're not the architectural review board, we're interested in new wetland portion and making sure that uh, you're doing the best you can there, and I'm, I was pleased with the CAC's comment, I agree with them about improvement of, of removing a septic, uh, and putting that further to the south. Uh, that's a big improvement, and would count according to their feeling, I don't know about how Jan feels about that, uh, towards uh, mitigation.
Yeah, as so, um, I do feel a little bit like, I know that you're, you're mitigating the new impervious surface, but this is a pretty sensitive um, area. You know, it's in the hundred and fifty-foot buffer, it's um, it's, it's over a slope that slopes down to the lake. I would really like to see a little more more stormwater, uh, more area handled by stormwater, more of the runoff handled by stormwater. I'm not really sure how much of it goes towards the lake side of the house versus the other side of the house. Um, but it does seem like if I'm, if I understand correctly, you're basically just using, capturing um, some of what comes off of the back, but not all of what goes towards the lake. And I don't know how much I'm really asking, but um, I'd, I'd, I'd encourage you to think about because of the sensitivity of this area, and I'm hoping that with the rebuilding of the whole house, there'd be a way to capture and maybe do a little bit more than that. Um, and I think Jan's memo um, does have some comments about stormwater, we'll, we'll come to that. Um, the other thing is, it looked like the mitigation was gonna go down um, towards one of the areas of um, of the lake. I don't know if there's a existing pathway down to the, to the house, or what kind of um, work is planned for that, if there is a path, or if there's going to be a new pathway, I'd like to see a little bit more of that. And I believe that the current um, owners or the, the prior owners that used to have and still might have sort of boat ramps up into the area, which looked like it was gonna be where there's mitigation. Um, and so I'd just like a little clarity on that as well. If possible.
Yeah. Well, you know, Janet, to your point, I think uh, Rich, can you bring up the erosion control plan that shows at Topography?
So, might actually help is uh.
Well, the, the other sheet, um, you see uh, what is it? EC one. Yeah. So, uh, you might want to explain the uh, water, uh, the stormwater of travel, it looks to me like on the east side, a significant amount of water is, is going down toward the lake and bypassing the infiltration system. Unless you've got a way to pick it up there with either cash basin or a swale. Could you describe that?
Right now, the majority of uh, the front actually drains back towards the lake. Um, there's a um, a ridge line that exists in the property, um, up in this air general area. And a large portion of the existing driveway, house, carport, deck, rear terraces, all drain back towards the lake. What we thought as part of mitigation and being fair was, you know, one, we would get the septic area out of um, the buffer. Two, the area that we're capturing and bringing to this infiltration trench system is greater than the amount of increase in impervious surfaces. Um, so we thought that was, again, an additional benefit beyond what exists. Three, we are adding mitigation area along the edge of the wetland. Um, if you go to the site, you know, it's not all manicured lawn, there's, there's a lot of trees, uh, I don't believe there's a formalized walk to the bathhouse, but I gotta verify that. Um, so I'll, I'll take a, a trip to the site and just look. I don't know that we are proposing one, as much as to keep things natural. And one of the things that I would have to do, and this is the balance, is in order to provide more stormwater treatment, I have to do more disturbance in the buffer. And as part of the trade-off we were looking at in performing the design of the site is, you know, is it a benefit to use the existing septic and minimize the amount of additional disturbance? Um, capture and treat more than what's being discharged or treated now? And get the septic out of the buffer, and we thought all those were enough positives um, to offset the eight hundred and ninety square foot increase in impervious we were proposing.
Yeah, I hear that, but uh, could you just uh, point out how much drainage is bypassing the infiltration and the storm system you're providing to this, to the east side and heading down toward the lake without any treatment?
It's really everything beyond, it's all this existing house, really all we're catching is this back terrace and patio.
Jerome, that the rest of that, the roof of the house is going to roof leaders that just discharge to, to grade.
Correct.
They're not going to any sort of system, so the, the patio is getting picked up uh, and treated in the existing septic area, but the remainder of the house, uh, there's, there will be no treatment.
And we can do additional treatment, it's just gonna mean additional disturbance, additional tree removal. We have to make the system bigger.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think part of our comments is that we're not a hundred percent sure that the existing septic area is of a sufficient size to capture the patio, you know, we have some additional, uh, we have some comments about the modeling um, that was done, and it's just some additional information we need on the, the existing septic system itself. Uh, we got a copy of the, the permit, the original construction permit, but there's pretty limited information there. Uh, we wanna see an actual kind of um, as-built design of the, the septic and some, some testing around the septic to make sure that it's going to function properly, and there's some questions about the sizing of the septic, and if that's gonna be of adequate size to me, you know, there are, are requirements.
Well, in my mind, if those are the, the only two issues that are of concern, the size of the storm drainage and of the septic, I would uh, I would uh, go along with an administrative uh, review at this point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure I'm there, just because of these questions about the stormwater capacity. Um, but I'm sorry, I should have, I should ask other people for their comments.
I think we're okay with an administrative review.
Okay.
I, I tend to agree with Janet, given the fact that this is a house, it's gonna have significant uh, construction, it's right on the lake. Um, I'm a bit hesitant to grant that, pardon me, administrative review.
Jan, do you have, um, well, do you wanna maybe bring up some of your comments on the, on the memo?
Um. Yeah, I mean, the, the majority of the comments have been satisfied, they were really down to the stormwater. Um, whether the septic's gonna be adequate, whether the board's satisfied that it's, it's only picking up the patio and not the, the roof, and whether the board feels that sufficient mitigation is being provided. I had a question just on the disturbance number within the buffer, the three thousand or so square feet. What is included in that? I'm assuming it's not the house footprint. Yeah, that been deducted from the, the coverage, Rich?
So, we looked at, um, we looked at the proposed disturbance. Not, so we looked at basically what we were, what we were increasing, so no, we didn't take the existing house footprint. But anywhere where we were really disturbing land.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I wanna get some level of comfort that there's um, that the existing foundation's going to be um, sufficient, and that there's no likelihood of the foundation needing to be replaced.
Disturbance, yeah.
Kind of got into that situation a number of times, where it's been um, indicated that the foundation's to remain, they start uh, breaking the house apart, it's been litigation, and all of a sudden, you know, everything's getting pulled down and it's completed. Um, I'd like some level of comfort from the architect that uh, testing's been done and the foundation is intact, and it's gonna be suitable for the new build. Um, if that's the case, I, I think you can exclude the, my opinion, exclude the footprint, because there's really no land disturbance taking place there. Um, but I still, you know, I, I do believe that the, the, the septic area getting pulled out of the buffers is significant.
Yeah.
The rest of the mitigation is, is basically twenty-four plants down by the, you know, the edge of the wet. Which, I, I think that more could be done, um, in terms of mitigation, the septic area quite possibly could, could be required to be pulled out of the buffer because of other regulations, I don't think the app kind of ever got there, but uh, it's a brand-new construction, there's substantial additions being made to the house, it's possible that the Health Department would have required that septic to be reconstructed anyway. But nonetheless, it's still, it's a benefit obviously for it to get out of the buffer, and I don't discount that.
Right.
Did provide um, some additional comments about maybe potential additional mitigation, whether it's in the form of a deed restriction around the lake edge, or as Jen pointed out, uh, additional stormwater practices. I would like to see something done just because of the slope that's involved between the house and the lake, and the entire roof being discharged to ru- uh, to drains on the slope there. I'd like to see something done there, I think it's, it's uh, reasonable.
Well, you know, to that point, Jan, why, why can't there be a manifold and a collection system? Instead of uh,
There could be, as, as Rich points out, it's, it's gonna add to the disturbance number, but no, that, that doesn't necessarily um, concern me. Um, I think it's most important to, to treat the stormwater, that's the, the main impact. Lake, the rest of it is temporary, temporary disturbance, it's gonna be vegetated, it's gonna be handled.
Yeah.
More.
I, I think that's where I'm coming to too, is I, I think there's either a temporary disturbance, but a more permanent solution, and I would tend to vote for that. I think the other question I have um, is now that we under, the, I think the Three Lakes Council brought up, could the, could the actual septic tanks, not the fields, but the tank parts, be moved to the other side of the house? And now that you are basically, the whole house is coming down, down to that part, how difficult would it be to move to? Uh, maybe it's a, a question of slope, to put the, the tanks out on the other side of the house. I, I don't know whether that would be something you could look at.
The front of the house is actually in a crawl space and not a full basement.
Ah.
I can take a guess as to why.
Oh, rock?
And, you know, we, we did talk internally about whether or not that was something that we could accommodate. Um, we thought that based on the fact that, you know, this isn't a new construction, this is an existing house, and we're really staying on the same footprint. You know, that there, there could be some give. Um, and it, it does make a, a big difference to be able to continue to take the plumbing out the rear of the house where it's lower, makes it easier to, to plum the basement level as well.
Well, I, I think I would like to um, to explore, you know, what could be, I, I understand, I don't necessarily want, you know, the entire place to have to be deforested in order to, to put in stormwater, but maybe there's something that could be done to try to pick up a little bit more.
What, what I really think our opportunity is, is when we get out and, and we do our testing, and we actually unearth the existing septic. It, it's something Jan alluded to in his comment memo, that, that we know we need the opportunity to do as well, it's just, we can't at the moment.
Right.
Um, but once we do, you know, there may be an opportunity to put in a deeper unit there, where we could pick up additional volume. That's probably the best bet to avoid us taking down a lot of the trees that exist, because it is a pretty forested site between the house and, and the lake. And we're not necessarily looking to, to change that.
Yeah.
Um.
And I think there were, I had um, just a couple more questions, I guess, overall. One is, it looks like there is going to be some kind of room over the garage. Is that a and, that isn't another bedroom? I think you said the same number of bedrooms were gonna be in existence there?
Correct.
Right, it's just a loft, there's no bathroom associated with the, the garage.
Okay, and then what is happening down in the bathhouse? I know that there was a, I think, a bathroom fixtures that are being removed, but what, what's happening down by the lake?
Just refurbishing the cot, the wood structure, no plans to have any toilets or any sinks or anything down, it's just a wood cabin.
With electric?
It may have an electric feed to it, but I can't remember.
Oh, you wouldn't plan to put in a new one? I'm just thinking about disturbance and what's happening.
No, no, they wanna just restore it so it doesn't fall over and put new screens on it, probably.
Yeah.
And there's really just a natural path down the slope, there's no formal path being planned to go from the house to the uh, cool.
Well, uh, you know, looking at the uh, plan, and it shows the catch bases on the patio going down to a riprap uh, pad, a velocity dissipated down there. I thought, I, I was under the impression that the um, infiltration system was taking the patio, it's not.
It is, but for anything, you know, we only treat the water quality volume in those systems, we typically don't put twenty-five and a hundred year flows into them. So usually, we would design a flow splitter upstream of the infiltration system to divert the flows.
Okay, so it's not taking the roof water, and it's not taking the patio, or some of the patio?
It takes, it takes the water quality volume from the patio only.
Okay.
Which is typical for stormwater design, in, in as much as the water quality volume event is infiltrated, not the larger storm events.
Okay, but those drain inlets, so let me understand, what, what water are they taking? Because they, they're bypassing the infiltration.
So there's, there's a, a freestanding knee wall around the patio.
Yeah.
So all of the patio will drain to the two drain inlets, the yard drains, which then go to a flow splitter. The flow splitter diverts the water quality volume into the infiltration system, and then bypasses the larger storm events into the collection system, which goes down to a riprap pad for velocity dissipation.
I see. You okay with that, Jan, or is that?
Well, I think we're looking for, uh, part of our comments were to that effect, Jerome, and trying the larger events into a stormwater system.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanna say one more thing, and uh, in regard to your comment, Maureen, about the size of the house, I don't think the size of the house really enters into the equation here, except. really enters into the equation here, e- except for needing more erosion control, I mean, that, that, so in terms of whether it goes administrative, and I think if the issue still is around, the size of, and the nature of the infiltration, of the stormwater, and the size of the septic, I would still say, uh, I could see it going administrative, as long as the, erosion control and sedimentation control is, uh, sufficient, which would be normally the case.
I, I think, I, I see your point, I think I'd be satisfied, um, as long as our consultant, Jan, is satisfied. I think at this point, I'd be, I'd, I still think there are just too many questions.
I, I, well, um, I, I would tend to say, I'd, I'd like to hear more about the stormwater, and I understand that the problem is, that you need to get out there and test and see what the existing, you know, to-be-abandoned, um, septic system looks like. But I, I guess I'd still, um, like to see a little bit more, Jan, um, well, let me first ask, uh, uh, John from the CAC, we did get your letter, do you have any additional comments that you wanna make on, on this? I think you muted up there, yeah.
No, I think that, uh, what we wrote in the letter is what we have, we, uh, I tend to agree with you on the stormwater issue to be, get a little more definition. Uh, but of course, obviously, moving the, uh, the septic away from the lake is, is a very positive step in, taking the toilet out, which I think you didn't even know where it went. But yeah, I agree, the stormwater, I think, is the thing that needs to be resolved.
So, Jan, what do you think? Is this a, um, I, I, I sort of would like to see it, one more time, but I don't know what that does about timing with the current situation.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't, I have no preference either way, um, nothing's preventing us from witnessing testing. The testing, um, doesn't need to be witnessed by the health department for stormwater. So, so long as insight is comfortable with doing the testing and we're comfortable with witnessing it, that, I think can take place even under the restrictions. Whether it's handled administratively or not, I don't have a preference, my only concern would be, if you're looking for additional stormwater, um, if you put this in our hands, uh, and you're looking for additional stormwater, and it becomes something that you're not comfortable with, meaning, you know, the, the stormwater system increases in size and there's this, uh, substantial amount of tree removal associated with that, and, you come to find out during construction that it's, you know, something that you hadn't, uh, really envisioned, that's my only concern, that it, it kinda continues to, to develop, you know, outside of your review. My only concern, I, we're, we're, we can handle it either way, but, um, I just, I kinda like to, make sure everybody's comfortable with, you know, the final product.
Right, and do you know what the plans are, um, this is back to Rich now, about the, the sort of boat trailer bottoms that are on the side of the, the land there?
I have to, I haven't seen those, I have to go look myself.
Okay, 'cause I think they're down towards where you talk about mitigation. Um, I will say, one of, uh, maybe ask the board this too, one of the comments in, Jan's memo was looking for, uh, I think deed restrictions or something along the edge of the lake. We, I mean, it's basically anything that would be done there would have, require a wetland permit, but in some ways that, makes a little bit more, um, affirmative, um, restrictions, is that something that, you would have any interest in seeing pursued?
I mean, we have to, we have to talk to our client about that, I mean, the minute you permanently encumber a piece of property, it, it goes beyond their ownership. I think, you know, I think, looking back at the perspective on all this, I mean, we're open to looking at additional stormwater, we're open to providing mitigation. When you look at the level of improvements we're really proposing, you know, I, I gotta talk to my owners, but I think, like, they're starting to feel like a lot more is, is being taken than they're even asking for, and, you know, I don't know how comfortable they're gonna be with a deed restriction.
Yeah, everything does have to come to the planning board, with the exception of tree removal. You couldn't remove all the trees between the house and the lake and not require a wetland permit, you'd never see that. So, my, it, because it is so wooded, um, thinking that's something you'd wanna preserve, I would like to see, uh, something that would prevent, uh, the tree removal there, because like I said, it can be done without permits, uh, very easily.
And we've seen that happen before on, on lakefront properties.
I, I have to talk to my clients, like, that's up to them.
Okay, maybe, uh, and, and I don't know if there is something that, you know, if you, if you put in something in a mitigation area, is there ever a way, Jan, to define the mitigation area includes, these existing trees that should stay there?
You can limit it to just, uh, tree, tree removal, uh, within a certain area. Doesn't, it could, the restriction can take, uh, lots of different forms.
Well, I think, um, it sounds like Rich needs to, and the clients need to be appraised of where we are. I'm, I guess, for the sense of the board, I'm, I'm, I would like, I would like to see this, uh, develop a little bit further before, before trusting, entrusting it, I mean, to Jan, I don't know with other people. Maybe we should do a poll of how people feel on that, uh, Maureen?
Uh, I, uh, just aligning with my prior comments, I'd like to see it, developed a little bit more, I, 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 the, the tree removal aspect concerns me, uh, to be honest. The fact that we don't know the state of the foundation, uh, is an issue, so that, I think there are just some hanging threads that I, I'd like to be, you know, tied up.
Rich?
Yeah, I, I share Maureen's concerns as she articulated them.
As I mentioned, I think we can do this administratively.
And Jerome?
Well, I, I, I feel it can be administrative too, I'm concerned about tree removal, and maybe we could specify, that, you know, uh, diameters, uh, that are, you know, that, that couldn't, anything over a certain size should not be touched, I'm looking at the species there, and there's some really, nice specimen, I mean, uh, black birch, tulip. Some nice trees here that I, I would, I think any owner, would wanna maintain, but, you know, I'd like to see assurance of that, uh, along with an administrative approval.
Well, I don't think, I think it's sort of, um, the, the consensus is more to keep it, um, at the board level for, until we see a little bit more develop, I think, so, um, I think that's what we'll do. And it does sound, I mean, I am encouraged by the fact that Jan sounded like there, it is possible to do some, uh, some more exploration of the existing septic, to see whether, how much stormwater might actually be able to be, uh, handled in that, so, uh, that would give us some additional information.
Yeah, well, we'll talk to our clients about, you know, maybe, you know, uh, limiting, a way to limit the tree removal. Maybe that it isn't as permanent as a deed restriction, and, and see if it's something you guys are open to, and then, I will also talk to them to see if they're comfortable, the reason we wanted to do the town testing and the health department testing once, is to mobilize a contractor on site once, and to avoid bringing the machine out twice. Um, I will talk to them and see if, if they wanna advance the stormwater testing with Jan's office.
Okay.
While, while the health department is on hold.
I understand this is a difficult time, uh, you know, so I, I appreciate it, okay? Any, anything else on this?
Just one, one, just one last comment, uh, Rich, on the, uh, MP one. Sure, it's a mitigation plan, and that seems to show, the trees that I would think will remain, I mean, that's why they're on that plan, I would imagine, that's a post-construction plan. So maybe you could, all you, all you, I would like to see is some kind of, uh, codification that those are the trees that are gonna remain. Of course, they are the trees that are substantial in size, you know, eighteen-inch hemlocks, thirty-six-inch, hemlocks, thirty, thirty-inch hemlocks, they're substantial trees.
Yeah, we, we show the only trees we're proposing to remove on SP one, and, that's all my clients are proposing to remove, I just have to talk to them about, you know, the potential criminally restricting their property.
Okay, well, that, that, you know, that, that should be, uh, sufficient for us if we agree, so Jan could verify that. Next, next forum, okay?
And I guess I will say one more thing, I, I understand that the ZBA is, um, planning to have a meeting in May now, so, um, since you do have, we have seen a building inspector letter that, says there are some items that have to be, um, addressed at the ZBA, I did wanna make sure you knew that, it is apparently, um, going to be in session in May.
Word means for application.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a site development plan approval. This is, uh, calendar number O two twenty, um, B, sorry, PB, for Mandia Residences sixty-five Old Bedford Road, Goldens Bridge, New York, and this is, um, an application to convert, former Goldens Bridge Community House into four one-bedroom apartments. So, I know we have, I believe, Meg and, oh, Ed Delaney is waving. I think you can unmute yourselves. Lower left-hand corner, oh, and Bruce Mandy.
Hi, this is Tracy Chalifa, the landscape architect. Are you able to hear me? Yes, okay, thank you.
Hi, Michael.
Oh, and Michael.
There it is, good evening.
Hi.
So, uh, Michael Sereniano, I, I represent Bruce Mandy and Meg Carey. Uh, and, uh, they have put together a, uh, excellent project team, Ed Delaney and, Tim Allen at Bibbo Associates, uh, I've done the septic engineering and, and the site plan work. Uh, we have Tracy Chalifa, who you just saw, as our landscape architect. And they also have on their design team, Samuel Gardner, as the architect. Uh, Bruce and Meg have long and deep ties to, uh, Lewisboro in general, but Goldens Bridge, Hamlet in particular, and, and Bruce's case, uh, Bruce's was born and raised in the Hamlet. He graduated John Jay High School in nineteen seventy-five. And, uh, the Mandia family first moved to Goldens Bridge in nineteen twenty-five. And, uh, and they started gradually developing, uh, their properties there, and currently, uh, Bruce as the trustee of his late father's trust, the Charles J. Mandia Trust, uh, Bruce has been managing, uh, all but two of the homes residences on Mandia Lane. Uh, the two exceptions being number fourteen and number twenty-six, all others are, are under Bruce's, uh, stewardship. Uh, he's a, he lives on, uh, in the Hamlet, uh, and, uh, and he very much, uh, uh, welcomes, uh, the opportunity to, to develop, uh, this new project on such an iconic, building in the Hamlet. Uh, Meg Carey, uh, has lived in, well, first moved to Lewisboro in nineteen ninety. She raised all three of her children in town, and all three graduated John Jay. Meg is a former two-term president of Wacabook Landowners Association, so she knows our town. Uh, professionally, she's, uh, develops energy-efficient solutions for the New York City real estate industry. Uh, she was a founder and president of McEnergy, and, uh, where she advised major, developers on how to best use and conserve energy in an environmentally responsible manner. Uh, she holds a US patent for ETRAC two, which is a software program, to track properties' energy use demand and environmental carbon footprint and energy savings, so, these two folks, uh, uh, very much were excited when the town board decided to, put the Goldens Bridge Community House up for sale. Uh, and, uh, and their vision for it is to repurpose this iconic building, which, has a long history as a school originally, and then later as town offices and a community center. Uh, and to repurpose it i- into a beautifully done, uh, four-one-bedroom apartment, uh, apartments plural, uh, with little, uh, exterior changes being proposed to the, to the building itself. Bruce and Meg went to contract with the town board, uh, back in July, July the tenth, twenty nineteen. That contract is expressly contingent upon, uh, that is, Meg and Bruce's obligations to close are contingent upon the, the issuance of all necessary, uh, approvals from your board and, and the building department and the Board of Health and, and other outside agencies perhaps. But at the time of the contract, the zoning in this R two F seven-point-five zoning district, did not allow up to four, uh, units, residential units. Uh, so the town board, uh, proposed a amendments to the zoning code to allow, uh, four units, uh, they circulated their first draft, uh, and your board had some very strong feelings about the first, uh, take of the local legislation, uh, which, uh, was as drafted by the town board, uh, originally was gonna give this special permit, uh, review, to the zoning board, uh, and your board felt very strongly that it should be the issuing authority. As I recall, it was, it was really based on, uh, you thought that site development plan approval, uh, should be part and parcel of, of this type of a special use permit. Uh, and, uh, and I think you also, uh, had some strong feelings about the original draft, only, required, uh, one off-street parking space per unit, and you felt it ought to be, uh, two off-street parking spaces. Uh, you prevailed, and the ordinance was amended and adopted, and the Westchester County, Planning Board, uh, uh, very much supported this new zoning, uh, because, and I'm quoting their September sixth, nine, twenty nineteen letter, because it will help encourage the development, of a range of housing types that are affordable to different income levels. And I'm quoting again, "We recommend the town adopt the proposed amendment." And they did adopt the amendment on October the twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. And they made changes to two twenty dash twenty-three, the schedule of regulations for residence, residential districts. And they also, uh, made amendments to two twenty dash forty-three point eight. And, and, you know, I'm sure you'll be guided by your able attorney, uh, judge will tell you, uh, that, this, in terms of the special permit, it's, uh, in New York, special permits are very much different than zoning variances. If, if the applicant meets the conditions set forth in the ordinance, uh, then the special permit shall issue. Of course, that, that's separate from the site planning functions and powers that you have. But under the new law, twenty-two twenty dash forty-three point eight, uh, on B, subsection B, it sets forth the various, uh, conditions, one is that, uh, number one, and I'm, I'm just gonna use their numbering in the statute, multifamily dwellings are permitted, uh, in this section, shall only be permitted in the R two F seven-point-five district, originally the town board was also gonna include, the, uh, R two F, um, uh, ten district. The, during that whole legislative, uh, public hearing process and, and the referrals to the zoning board and your board, the neighbors, uh, uniformly, uh, liked our project, Bruce and Meg's project, very much. They thought it was, would be a great. They thought it was, would be a great repurposing of, of this building. There, the concerns that most neighbors expressed was how broadly the amendments might affect the rest of the Hamlet. And in fact, Bruce and Meg were the ones that encouraged the town board to pull back and not to let this zoning amendment have impact way beyond what anybody wanted or intended. So we are within the district that's allowed. The maximum number two condition is maximum units of four. And that's what we're proposing, four one bedroom units. Condition three, the setbacks have, we have to meet all setback requirements for our district, and we do. Off street parking, as mentioned earlier, is under the new ordinance is two off street parking spaces. Although Bruce and Meg have a strong sense that because of the location of this in such close proximity to the Metro North Station, that not all four tenants will likely have two vehicles. They expect probably two, at least two of the four will have one vehicle, if not more than two of the four. But in any event, we are showing two off street parking spaces for each of our four dwelling units. The fifth condition is that we have a minimum acreage of point zero point six oh, and we have zero point seven two three. It's a perfectly rectangular lot, one forty by two hundred, one forty of frontage and rear. And it's two hundred and twenty five feet deep. The sixth condition is the buffer areas, and I'll let Stacey, Tracy deal explain her landscape plan about that, but we meet the minimum buffer area requirements of the chapter. Jan refers to condition number seven about inspections, which I don't have to get into right now. Condition eight of the ordinance, which again we meet, is density. The average gross density shall not exceed one density unit per zero point one five acres of net lot area. I don't believe we lose any net lot area to wetlands, water bodies, water courses, or steep, steep slopes. So if we do the math, we, we exceed, we do not exceed the one density unit per zero point one five acres of net lot area. I think we, we could have four point eight two units, but we have four obviously, which is the maximum. And also under condition eight, there's an A, that was A. B is that the approval authority, which is your board, shall be responsible for determining the number of bedrooms in each dwelling unit. So we're asking for one bedroom in each dwelling units. And, and presumably you'll so specify in your resolution. Condition nine is that the multifamily use shall only be permitted in existing buildings. So again, we're you repurposing an existing building. I guess the intent there was not to open this up to, to either tear downs or to new buildings in vacant lots. And ten, there's required referral to Accart, which we're going to ask you to, to get going for us tonight. So those are the conditions. I believe we meet all the conditions of this special use permit. And, and I'm about to turn this over to Ed to talk about the antiquated two cesspools that Ed has been working with the Board of Health to, to bring up to twenty first century. And also briefly about the site plan, then we're going to have Tracy give you her landscape plan. But here's, here's the big issue that I'd like all board members, as you listen to Ed and Tracy, keep in the back of your mind. Jan correctly points out that we are proposing in excess of disturbance of, in excess of five thousand square feet. Twelve hundred and fifteen of the fifty nine eighty five square feet of, of disturbance, overall disturbance is not land disturbance, it's disturbance of existing old macadam. In other words, if you look at, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but on Tracy's L one landscape plan, you can see that the existing macadam, and keep in mind that, that this building is essentially a school and the site improvements over many, many years are for school purposes. So it's just a lot of pavement, macadam areas that we don't want. Bruce and Meg don't want, and it certainly offends Tracy's aesthetic sensibility, sensibilities. And particularly on the driveway side of the building. There's a, an area, a rather large strip that Tracy wants to tear up the macadam, narrow the driveway there and put some plantings and, and lawn areas. And then along the front of the property on, on Old Bedford Road, the there's a parking area that's partially in the town right of way and partially on this property. And Tracy wants to restore, I don't know, maybe fifty, sixty percent of that, rip that macadam up and, and put in lawn area on top of, of where Ed's septic system is. The problem with exceeding the, the five thousand square feet is, and Jan's correct, it triggers DEC jurisdiction. And it's going to force us into considerable expense and equally importantly delays. Because we're going to have to get a Spidey's general permit. And, and Megan and Bruce have thought this through and talked to the project team about it. And it's our view that we're, we're going to leave pavement if we have, if that's what we need to do. We're going to leave pavement we would otherwise like to rip up in order to stay under the five thousand. So, and so I'm going to let smarter minds than mine figure out how to stay under five thousand square feet and still have an aesthetically pleasing plan. Because that's really Megan and Bruce's vision for this, for this property. So with that, I'm going to ask Ed to pick up the ball and, and talk about his septic design and, and general site plan.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Let smarter people do this. I think Maureen is mentioning Maureen on that one. Tracy, if we can put up the existing conditions plan?
Yes, I'm being.
Turned out, we have a beast of a building here surrounded by pavement that was once a schoolhouse, split down the middle. Boys on one side, girls on the other. And exiting from each one of the, the side entrances was a sewer line going down to an old, old cesspools. So each side of the school building and the rec department, which we're in there for many years, thirty, you know, twenty, thirty years for the rec department, was deposited, there was no septic tanks here. This is the old way of doing it with cesspools right about, right near those areas right there. Which is basically septic tanks with holes in them. And we still have hundreds of those left in Northern Westchester. They tend to concentrate sewage in one particular area with very little treatment. All from Coton Falls to Goldens Bridge to Katona and Beaufort Hills. So this proposal of ours to split this first floor for a schoolhouse rec department into four one bedrooms constituted a change of use as defined by the West County Department of Health. Now, because we are a commercial property, that also means the New York City DEP had to react to this change in use. Bottom line is, we had to design a modern, up to date onsite wastewater treatment system that meets the codes of the year twenty twenty and get that approved by both the county health department and the New York City DEP. We were able to, unlike what Rich Williams just showed you, get underneath the curfew here and get soil testing done in the front of the, the building. And a little more on that in a little bit. You'll notice that the front parking area is where the people for all these years parked head on. Some of them parked inside the existing pavement. And we also have a handicap sticker on the wall at the side of the building here. The site is surrounded by, on the east side, a solid eight foot high fence, between eight and nine foot high. The rear is a solid six foot fence. And the west side is also a solid fence, so you can't even see in or out in this particular lot. I don't know who put the fencing up, but the, it's pretty dramatic. Currently also, we have a well in the back that's serving the, the house, community house right now. It's a public well with a large water treatment system in the basement. It takes up quite a bit of room in the basement. We will not be required to continue that. But as we speak today, the town is maintaining that every day of our lives right now, including heating this place. The existing stormwater, interesting roof design, that there's one continuous gutter going around all four sides of this roof with about seven, with about six to eight downspouts, either spilling water out on the driveway or going into the ground to some unknown area. The, also, it must be pointed out that this lot is dead level. The front of the lot is at the same elevation as the rear and at the side, and there are no pipes emanating from this lot. So we are on top of what we know as Old Goldens Bridge, a sand and gravel very well, a deep sands and gravel. So all the water are in this whole neighborhood goes vertically into the ground. So those are the existing conditions. And what we're, and knowing that we have to go get approvals from DEP and the, and West County Health Department, we have done that. So we've done all our soil testing. We've had them out there, both the DEP and County Health Department. We have designed a system for, and all, what I've done and what I've learned from years is when you have multiple family, not only do you put in the required size septic tank, you want to increase that by fifty or hundred percent, which, which I did in the design that was proposed to the county and the city. Only because we found out that in multiple families like this, everybody gets up at the same time, everybody flushes at the same time. And you really need that increased detention time. The current proposal has been reviewed by the County Health Department, has been reviewed by DEP. And in this current environment, the, our plans were revised moderately. And it's now in front of the County Health Department. I expect full approvals. I would have had them by now, by this meeting. But I, I don't see any problem with us putting that modern septic system in there. Going, we will keep this current well, and it will be providing to the four owners. The, the only requirement here is that we, the owners of the house or community house has to provide any buyers with a recent water test, a full blown, it's a four or five hundred dollar test. That's a requirement even of private homes. If you wanted to sell your house tomorrow, you would have to provide your, your buyers with this type of test. Fortunately for us, the town is constantly testing this water, so we don't expect any problem with that. The stormwater that now spills all over the place and into the ground, we are going to eliminate the downspouts in the front by the building at those corners right there. And we are going to try to capture the roof and bring it back into an infiltration system in the rear, which we will now know is all sand and gravel. So we will, if we do this, or if we're required to do this, we will do the testing in front of Jan and Kellid Sessions. The current pavement that's there, as Tracy will show you, will be, we wanted to, let me, let me back up a second. With what I've just told you about the improvements is, and we leave everything alone, just the way it is, the way we're going to buy it. The amount of disturbance here is less than five thousand square feet, so it doesn't trigger state permits. Because we're on Main Street, it doesn't trigger, God help us, New York City DEP stormwater approvals. Go look at Baccio's if you want an example of that. So we want to make sure that everybody understands that we could provide disturbances under five thousand square feet, keep the intent of the town and the sale. We are providing a newer access to the rear existing pavement to get it around into a, there's our eight spots back there that are required. Tracy will go on to the low lighting and everything else there. But if we left everything just that way, we're, we're underneath five thousand square feet of disturbance and everybody goes home. However, the man, Bruce Mandy and Meg really wanted to beautify this area, dig up a lot of this pavement, replace it with bushes and trees. And I guess Tracy will get into that more. We're, we're also leaving the flagpole that's been there for many, many years. And we have the school bell up on the front of the, on top of the front entrance, which still rings to this day if we want it. We're, we're leaving that. So with that being said, Tracy has provided a incredible landscaping plan. But as Mike Sereniano has actually suggested that this, if we go through this landscaping plan and if we include it in disturbance, all of a sudden it triggers this cascade of permits and approvals that may may subtract from what we're really trying to do here.
Hey Ed. Ed, it's Jan.
Yes.
Mind if I jump in real quick?
Go ahead.
It's on the five thousand square feet of disturbance. I don't see that as a significant threshold to exceed. The five thousand square feet of disturbance is going to require a town stormwater permit, which this board would review and issue and along with the, you know, the site plan and special use permit. And the filing of an erosion sediment control plan and NOI, which you've prepared already. The NOI, as you know, fourteen page form, we review it, get submitted to the state. That's it. It has nothing to do with the DEP. It's going to, it's not going to increase the, the timing of approvals or costs in, in any way. What I think that you, you're trying to avoid is the DEP.
That's exactly right.
But the DEP doesn't have, the five thousand square feet has nothing to do with the DEP. You could be, you could have five hundred square feet of disturbance, but because you're in the designated Main Street area, if you have one square foot of, of impervious cover, new impervious cover, you, you require DEP SWIP approval. I think you're in the designated Main Street area, according to the maps we have.
Well, I just didn't want to get into a stormwater, a SWIP approval at all.
Yeah, but the SWIP in this case, since you don't have, you're under an acre, is going to be an erosion sediment control SWIP.
So I understand that. I understand that. And you'll notice that there's no erosion. We're not doing any construction here. There's no construction stabilization. There's no, there's no construction here of the building.
No, but you have a septic area. You have a stormwater area.
The septic, septic area is going to be done in two days.
I'm talking about erosion control. I'm talking about putting up some silt fence.
Yeah, we will do that.
I know. So it, I mean, it's a very, very basic, the stormwater permit is nothing to be, to shy away from or, or in my opinion, to alter the design to avoid, because it has really no impact on anything, timing, cost, nothing. It's, it's the filing and of an, and of an NOI. It has no stormwater implications. It's the erosion sediment control plan.
I just don't, I just want to avoid the DEP stormwater.
Okay.
View here. You can't even get a hold of them.
I know, but
For months.
The DEP threshold's completely different. Has nothing to do with the amount of disturbance in this case. It's all added impervious cover. You can have twenty five thousand square feet of disturbance. And you wouldn't need to go to the DEP. It's, it's added impervious cover because you're in the designated Main Street.
Well, actually, what we have here, when we get all done, we will have less impervious than we have now.
Okay, but just understand that you can have a net reduction in impervious cover. But if you're taking one square foot of, of grass or earth and you're converting it to something that's impervious, I'm not saying, I don't know if you do or you don't, but that would require, if you're in the designated Main Street, BP approval. So you can have over five thousand square feet of disturbance, so long as you don't, you're not adding any impervious cover, you don't need to go to the DEP.
Well, we, we are adding impervious cover to get to this back parking area. Now, I could get to that back parking area without adding that. It'd be a difficult squeeze.
Yeah, and the other.
If you're, if you're eliminating pavement, either in the front or in the back, which you're saying there's more than you. either in the front or in the back, which you're saying there's more than you need in the back, then on balance, you're, you're uh negative.
Yeah, that's not what Jan is suggesting.
It's not an increased storm. It's at, you could have two thousand square feet less impervious cover at the end of the day. But if there's one square foot of conversion from grass or landscaping impervious, that's gonna trigger the D E P in this case because
I see.
In designated Main Street. Now, if that driveway, the curvature of that driveway, that portion is done in gravel. Um, and you know, that could, that would need to go to the D E P.
Okay, then we'll talk, we'll talk about that, Jan.
Okay, I just don't want you to change, you know, the landscaping or something, it'd be very positive. The five thousand square feet is not your issue here. Um, it's the, it's because you're in the designated Main Street, the D E P designated Main Street area, adding impervious cover, those walkways on um, you know, the west side, those pavers, that walkway, you know, if that's not there and you're proposing that, that's gonna trigger D E P approval.
Okay, well, that's definitely what we don't want to do here.
The driveway is fifteen feet wide. If the building inspector says the, the code requires a sixteen-foot wide driveway for multifamily and you have to increase the width of this driveway and you're gonna pave that, that's gonna require D E P approval. If the added width is done in, in gravel, or you rip the whole driveway out and you just put in a gravel driveway, that wouldn't. So it's more of an impervious surface game than it is a disturb, uh impervious surface game than a, a land disturbance quantity.
Okay, so it looks like uh you and I will be getting together on this.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, uh, let's go to Tracy and the landscaping.
Okay, so you know, ju- just to um reiterate the overall intent of this, you know, from Meg's and Bruce's overall intent for this property is to create an improved aesthetic of the property, more of a residential neighborly feel. And much of that is being done, here I'll send this, much of that is being done through the use of, you know, reduction in pavements and converting those removed pavement areas. Who, in this case here, the existing concrete walk goes salon. And then much of the pavement in this area would be removed and converted to flowering shrubs, perennials, evergreen and deciduous. Um, a lot of those plantings would be native. And also, you know, there'd be slight changes to the site, as we mentioned, the new sweep of pavement as the existing driveway is utilized. We need to maneuver more easily to access the seven spaces in the rear. And we have the eighth space, the accessible space um at the left front of the building. And that's to access apartment number two, which is accessible. So they would park here, utilize the existing front walk, come into the foyer on level. And then there's actually an existing lift within the building servicing apartment two. Um, since this plan is flipped, here is Old Bedford Road, I'm sure you picked up on that, so north is actually pointing down on this plan. Um, additionally, the parking would be restripped and we'd have our backing distance of about twenty-six feet, so they can easily maneuver. We're calling for um, the approximate size is ten by ten trash enclosure. A truck could come in here with a front fork and easily switch out the dumpster if it is a dumpster, but it could be trash cans. We're not sure yet at this point in the process. Um, as Ed mentioned, there is an existing fence on three sides of the property, which is providing a lot of screening. However, we'd like to enhance the property further and also soften that fence. So along the uh eastern side of the driveway, we're proposing tall native grasses. They're just called out generally as native ornamental grasses, cause this is a preliminary plan at this point. So um tall native grasses that would actually hold their winter form, they would not flop over, is the intent. And along the rear property line to the south, some evergreen screen trees to help soften that fence. And there is a little bit of, of vining material and bramble back there that we're proposing to remove and dispose of off-site. So we can get those new evergreens in. I'd like to note that no trees are to be removed to execute this project. Um, we're gonna keep every existing tree. And in addition to that, we're proposing at least three new canopy trees here, here and here. Below these would be lawn, and then again, foundation plantings on both sides of the building. There would be a new concrete walk here, and this walk would serve apartment number four. And then on the other side, as we mentioned, would be stepping stones with gravel in between. And the reason for that is we'd like to respect the root systems of the existing trees, be as sensitive to those as possible. And this walkway provides access to apartment number one. And then obviously, apartment number three, they would follow this walk. And they would come through the front door into the front foyer to access that apartment. Um, in terms of, I'd like to speak about the lighting. Um, the lighting is really just for safety. And the intent is not to see the source of the lighting. We'd like to remove the existing floodlights from the building. I believe there are one or two on the front and one on this corner here. So we'd like to take those off to, to reduce the light pollution. And replace them with decorative sconce lights on either side of the front door, which would have light directing shields in them to, to have the light point down. And then in order to get the users safely from their cars to their apartments, the, what we're suggesting preliminarily are low voltage path lights, again, low voltage L E D, these are just little lights with a nice finish. Let me just scroll to something like this, they're generally, oh, excuse me, let me, okay, there we go. So it, it's just a little light, maybe twelve to eighteen inches tall with a four to six inch cap. And we put them in the plantings bed, beds wherever possible, but in some cases, they may be within the lawn areas. Just to provide the level of safety to get people where they're going. And then the fourth light style is, they would be recessed, recessed lights within within the porch overhangs at this entrance to apartment one and this entrance to apartment number four. So these are lights that wouldn't even be seen, there'd just be gentle glow pointing downward again. We can provide the photometrics to show zero cutoff at all the property lines and comply with the dark sky compliance codes. Uh, and additionally, preliminarily again for the trash enclosure, even though the property will be screened from all sides and neighbors shouldn't be able to see in the trash enclosure, maybe something like this for low maintenance, just probably a six-foot tall vinyl-type fence. And at this point, if no one has any questions, I'd like to turn it over to Sam Gardner, our architect. And I'm going to now show some photos of the existing building. And I, I will scroll through this for Sam as he finds necessary.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So our proposal is to repurpose this existing charming former schoolhouse.
A little louder, please?
Yeah, we can barely hear you.
Okay, I'll do my best to increase. Can you hear me better now?
Thank you.
I was going, going through headphones, they weren't working. Okay, so we have the existing nineteen-eleven uh former schoolhouse, a charming structure with, with great vernacular bones. And to be honest, we're not planning to change the exterior appearance of the building at all. Um, it's uh, it's, it's actually in surprisingly good shape, uh you know, it's been maintained. Um, the uh, the we can go through the pictures, here's the uh, the front entrance, which is a a handicap ramp to a foyer, which is at a lower level from the apartments. The apartments are about six risers up from this foyer. Uh, there's an existing uh enclosed lift in this foyer, which we're going to reuse, and that will help us provide uh, you know, you have to identify the units as A units or B units, A meaning it's fully handicap accessible, we only need one. So we, we identified uh unit one, I'm sorry, two as our handicap unit. So just uh going around the building with the photos. We'll go to the next one. Here's the east elevation, so you're seeing the entrance to one of the rear units here, which is just a simple shed roof. Um, which we're maintaining. Uh, Tracy mentioned we're gonna downlight underneath this shed roof. So it's a recessed light that just lights the uh, the, the entrance really, uh where your feet are gonna be. It's a, it's a small raised pad, concrete pad. And then just working your way around the building. Sorry about this, this is the side, oh, you turned it, great. This is what that entrance looks like, and, and we'll have to slightly increase the size of this pad. But you can see, it's just a simple shed roof, supported by a post and the building itself. Um, so why don't we continue? And here's the rear of the building, so the parking is gonna be at this point um, on the, the uh macadam, the existing macadam, what you're also looking at is a uh, a low enclosure for uh the water service, which is in, in there. But it's, it's actually connected to the well, which is out on the site.
Uh, notice that the pavement goes right up to the building on all, on two of these corners, which we were trying to remove.
Right.
The aesthetics here.
Good point. We're trying to put planters along the edge of the building to soften its, you know, connection to the ground. And also you can see that the, the basement level is, has, you know, those are four-foot-high windows. So the whole basement has uh, you know, light and access to air around the entire perimeter. Except for the, well, for most of the front, except for that, that foyer part of the building. And then carrying around to the other side. Uh, there's an existing um sort of Bilco-style hatchway that we're going to maintain as access for the landlords, you know, to get into some uh storage rooms or, and whatnot. And I think that completes the circumnavigation, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, this view is showing you the entrance to apartment one at the rear, which currently does not have a roof. So the only change to the outside of the building is to build a new shed-style roof to match the other side. With the same conditions, you know, a, a light underneath the soffit to, to light the entrance. And the architectural drawings, which are next. Here's the, the basic layout of the apartments, it's really a four-square. And we're, for the most part, trying to maintain the existing bearing walls, like a, it's like a cruciform in the middle there. Uh, turning those into tenant walls. And reusing uh to the rear, the existing staircases, because the, the entrance to uh apartment one and apartment four are actually half-level down. And so you'll come up those stairs, you'll be at a landing, and then you'll enter the, you'll, you're basically in the apartment at that point. And then um there is another half-set of stairs that take you up to a half-bath. Those were the existing bathrooms in, in the um, the former school. So we're uh, we're maintaining, those are the little details that are to the top and the bottom of the page. Those are, those live over the entrance into the apartment at, at street level. And then the front two apartments, uh everything is, is a mirror image for the most part of each other. You know, you have the front foyer. And you come up a, a central set of stairs, and you can either enter to the apartment to the right or to the left. And Tracy, it might be useful just to point out the location of that lift. Which is right there, and actually meets the, the requirements of uh the handicap code. So that's the basic layout of the uh, the apartments, just one bedrooms. There are staircases that can take you down into the basement where there will be a uh essentially a storage room available to the tenants.
So, so there's nothing for, no, nothing's for common use at all?
No.
Well, I think there's a laundry, there's a laundry area in the basement.
Is the basement ceiling, is the basement ceiling uh, you know, up, up to, up to code? I think it's a little short down there, isn't it?
It's seven feet. It's seven feet, so it, it doesn't meet building code in that sense. Uh, but you know, we can either approach it through a code modification or um, the spaces down there are meant for access to a laundry facility or storage for the tenant. And there's gonna be some landlord spaces. And also, right in the middle of the plan there, Tracy, I don't know if you can show it, is the existing uh utility room. That's where um, there's a massive water treatment system. And a uh, the flu is there, you know, the
In the basement?
In the basement.
Okay.
So I did have a couple of questions about the basement layout. I didn't, um, I did notice that the apartment that is handicapped has a washer dryer. I did not notice a common area for laundry for the other apartments.
I think we've decided that each individual unit's gonna have its own laundry um washer dryer.
That would be great, uh, cause I was gonna, one of the requests I was gonna have is if, if not, um, if those weren't in there would be to consider at least putting a um washer dryer, um, you know, hookups into the exercise rooms that you have below.
Yeah, I think that's the plan now. It, the, the thoughts have evolved since we, we submitted this plan to you.
What, what's the total square footage of each apartment?
Um, well, the footprint of the building is, is approximately four thousand. I'm gonna say the net is, you know, in the range of nine hundred square feet. You know, when you take out for walls and you take out for other mechanical chases and everything. And you can see that the staircases for the back two apartments are quite large.
Right.
And also the common area in the front. You know, we're, for the most part, we're respecting the bones of the building. And, and not trying to disturb a lot of the existing walls.
And I had another question in the basement again. Um, I noticed it looks like there are three oil tanks. But you're gonna have four apartments, so I don't know whether it's common, I don't know if this is common heating and it's part of the rent or, or or are you gonna put more heating or what happens here?
Yeah, we haven't fully worked that out, but what you're seeing is there's an existing hot water and steam, well, it's a steam system. So there's a furnace that creates hot water and circulates through the building into a steam system. We're removing that. Uh, we're not planning to have a, a common uh heating system for the building. So the future of those oil tanks is to be determined.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Hi, question for Ed and the architect, but Ed primarily, you know, uh, the health department is The health department is has criteria for rooms that would be considered as bedrooms. And do you think the basement is a potential for them to consider those potential bedrooms?
No, they we've already discussed that with the health department. There since there's limited access to a full bath at that level, it it would not call them bedrooms. If we had had a shower or something downstairs, I would I would have a problem. Right now, there's a they've already reviewed these floor plans. They're
Okay.
Okay.
Also, to be honest, we're below the outfall for the the sanitary system to get out to the so
That's that's easily overcome mechanically, you know, with a pump.
You could have a pump, but you know, that's why we were thinking of putting the washer dryers down there, because, you know, the washer has a pump in it and can water.
If any planning board members wish to walk through the building, the town still owns it. So just call the supervisor's office and make your own schedule.
Yeah. The very high ceilings in the apartments, the windows are eight feet tall. They start at four feet sill. So, you know, you have ceilings there that are really magnificent. And yeah, they're going to be very unusual and unique apartments.
I think it's an excellent adaptive reuse, and I think the landscaping you got softens it, as you said before, you know, takes takes the edge off of it, brings to more residential feeling. And, you know, I I think it's commendable.
Yeah, I I I think it's very attractive. I don't think you're going to have trouble finding tenants. I do have a question also in the in the very front is talk about how people currently park on the on the front area. Is that being taken up? Some of that parking or because it looks like there's still McAdam parking identified out in that front.
Well, it's it's there, Janet. It's how it's been used for 40 years. I don't know how it's going to be used in the future, but we are providing our tenants with parking in the back with lighting.
Right.
Moving that walkway in the front there, which would discourage that. But that's notice that's not on our property. I don't know what when the town wants to deliver this building to us. Do they want to provide an easement there? Do they want to take those railroad ties up? Does the town want to take that up? Most of that's off our site. So I I would imagine it would probably stay there. Or maybe take it up. I don't know.
I didn't know if it got shorter because you were putting in the septic. Your septic is does not intrude onto what was formerly McCadham. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I think the preference would be to leave the McAdam area that's within the town right away for possible parallel parking of some visitors, guests, or when when mom or dad or mother in law come to visit one of the unit renters.
I'm trying to remember, what's the street parking? Is it allowed on both sides there? I can't remember. Or it's one side. I'm trying to remember.
There are spots in front of the building. There's there's space for spots in front of the building. I don't know if you're going to continue with that.
We usually I think there's about spots for about 10 cars right there.
Yeah, part parking, you know, not not traditional, but like parking head in towards the building.
Head in. I mean, that's that's where we parked to get all our pool passes over the years.
Right.
Right. Okay, um, Jan, you did have a memo here. Do you want or I'm sorry, is any have I cut off anybody?
Actually, you know, I have a question. Who's going to manage this property?
Bruce and Meg and Bruce, and they live right in, you know, nine iron away.
Well, depends on how it depends on how well you hit your nine iron, but I get what you're saying.
It's a five iron for me.
Okay. And is there any requirement on, you know, who can live there or, you know, who has to who this has to be offered to?
No.
One who wants to pay rent.
Okay.
It's going to be market rent.
Okay.
Are you going to require a handicap? I mean, I see you have an ADA accessible apartment. Does that ha I don't. This is more out of curiosity is, does that mean you need to find a ADA? A person who needs an ADA apartment?
No, no, it doesn't. It it's kind of it. The handicap code resides in the building code. And when you have multifamily above two units, you have to create what are called A units or B units. A units are ones that are sort of ready to go as handicap units, and B units are ones that can be modified if requested.
Adaptable, yeah.
Adaptable, exactly. So yeah, it's it can perform for either a handicapped person or not.
So someone with twins and strollers could really use that lift.
Well, and that's the point I always make about ADA is that, in fact, at some point in our lives, everybody needs an accessible, you know, facility. You know, you you get your toe operated on, you know, you need help. So but the point being is that it's it's really driven by building code.
The lift is totally within one of the apartments, right? So
No, it's in the the foyer.
Is that is that foyer that's is not only you only access for the one apartment though, right?
That is correct, because we're only required to provide one unit that's fully handicap accessible.
Do you have, I guess, what an outside vendor that has some kind of maintenance contract to take care of the lift, I guess?
Yeah, we you know, we haven't fully looked into the you know, the condition of that lift. But, you know, up until recently, it was considered a fully operating element.
Yeah, the town, the town really maintains that, Richard.
Yeah.
You know, the building guys.
Yes, Joel and everybody, yeah.
Yep.
Jen, before you go to to Jan, it's my job as the project lawyer to try to move this along and keep expenses down. So I would only note that that your board has the ability to waive the public hearings on the site development plan and the special use permit. We would ask you to seriously consider that, particularly since, again, during the whole legislative amendment process, the neighbors uniformly, I think I can state fairly were are in favor of this project and our and Megan Bruce's vision for the project. Their concerns were about unintended consequences of zoning changes on other parts of the hamlet. So I would keep ask the board to keep that in mind. If if you don't feel comfortable waiving the public hearing, we'd ask that you schedule it as soon as you possibly feel comfortable doing so.
Has has this been shared informally with any of the neighbors? The plans?
Well, during the legislative process, we we showed our plans, which aren't very much different from what we you showed us, we showed you tonight. And and again, it was uniformly well received by the neighbors, particularly given the history of most recent use of this building, which was quite uncontroversial to some of the neighbors.
Hence my question.
And and how many, hold on. Okay, I thought I was on mute. Sorry. How many neighbors eventually chimed in? I remember reading some of those comments. But can you? Does anyone remember how many neighbors?
It was pretty. It was pretty packed the night that they voted on this at the town at the town board.
Okay. I I
I usually don't disagree too much with Mr. Serniano, but I don't necessarily agree with this assessment of 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 the uniform approval. But be that as it may, I would not necessarily be in favor of waiving the public hearing here.
Yeah, I I curious how many the the folks that have to be notified when a property such as this is is going up for a public hearing and vote. What is it 500 feet from the?
In this zone, it's 250.
250. Okay. And and it is there someone here that lives in Golden's Bridge? I know we've got a couple of planning board members who do so to give me an idea of roughly. Would that be 90% of of the people surrounding this property or or not?
What do you mean?
No, 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 I'm I'm looking at an area map right now. And there's probably is probably, you know, no more than 20 properties.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think just to be blunt, we have a certain sensitivity to Golden's Bridge being, you know, willing of making sure they have an opportunity to voice their opinion, you know, and that I don't I don't believe that is a statement about whether they are in favor or against. I just think we've
Yeah, we have to adhere to the process. Yeah.
Yeah, we want to make sure we're sensitive to the to the neighborhood.
I I would agree.
But that doesn't mean we can't move quickly. But so if we should we does anyone have any other comments or before we go to Jan and maybe ask for a little bit of run through the highlights of his memo?
No, I I agree with what's been said by Greg and Maureen. I think and you, I think sensitivity in the neighborhood is to have the hearing and to have it next month.
Okay.
We have no objection of public hearing as long as it doesn't delay us. So that's fine.
Hey, as far as Jan's memo goes, Jan and I will sit down with this and like we usually do. There are, Jan, if you're still listening, one of your concerns was getting an up to date survey contours, that kind of stuff. We we already have done that on one foot contours, spot grading all over the place. We are not proposing to regrade any of this.
I think that was more of I saw that I saw it on your plan set. It was it was like maybe like a layering thing where
There is a layering problem.
Yeah. So that's fine. Just submit a separate survey, you know, wherever you're getting your base information from.
Yeah.
Look at surveys.
John, what I think we'll do is, given your recommendations here tonight about forest pavement, some of our walkways, I think our team will sit down and go over that, come back to you with our new surveys. And if you don't think the 5,000 square feet is a problem, I don't want to go to DEP, so we're going to do our best to do that. And so with the board, Jan and I will sit down along with our team, and we'll hash this thing through in the next 30 days.
Well, if we want a public hearing in the next, at the next meeting, it would have to be a little faster than that.
Got to be advertised. How many days? 15 days minimum?
15 days for the mailings.
The mailing. Yeah, I I, you know, under these circumstances, and I don't want to delay anything, but is that really reasonable to think we're going to get a public hearing? We don't even know what mechanism we're going to use to to do it yet. They're going to get a public hearing in May.
Well, I do think so. I've been exploring a little bit about exactly how we might do that. My understanding is the requirements for a public hearing in this forum, we can still have one in in a video or audio conference. What has to be? We could we could tell the public that we will take written notices, of course, any kind of email can come in ahead of time. We can set up something so someone could email something that could be read during the meeting. And we would have to provide a way for audio to come in to the meeting.
Well, listen, since since these are all things, yes, I'm sorry. So these are things that, oh, God.
Oh, no, well, I was just going to Greg and the
Oh, Judd, I'm sorry. I didn't know.
Yes, yeah, no problem. So with with regard to the public hearing, you know, the 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 executive orders issued by, you know, by Governor Cuomo, not only do they allow the board to meet as we are tonight for regular business, but they also permit public hearings to go forward. We'd have to do a a public hearing utilizing this same format. You know, as Jan mentioned, we would have to allow for beings of public comment, both. I think we would certainly solicit written comments beforehand. We would have a mechanism so that email comments can be provided, and we'd also have a call in option if people wanted to call in during the course of the public hearing. That type of process is being utilized in other communities.
What's our technical capability as far as maximum capacity to people that can participate in this platform?
100?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the state's closed till May 15th, and I don't know. We'll get another executive order about those types of things that Judd was just talking about before then. But I I might be prudent to wait until our next meeting and see what the lay of the land is before we schedule a public hearing. Because we might be able to do something that's maybe not as restrictive and and concerning to people who have something to say and limiting what they want their ability to say it, you know, by June, as compared to like, say, when's our next meeting, like May 18th or something?
May 19.
May 19.
We with, I mean, Greg's points well taken, but we could also open the public hearing and we don't have to close it.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we would we would prefer that route to at least see if we could wrap this up in May. If not, you'll hold it open.
And I was on just on two different groups, two different Zoom meetings, actually, with with groups that were talking about the process for how they were handling handling these kind of both both meetings and public hearings. And the one of the people from the Office of State was there, and we talked about the fact that the the current executive orders have an expiration date and the current pause is ending that, you know, has a date. And the outlook was very much that that was not an end date. That they that they did expect this to be renewed.
Yeah, well, you know, like I said, since since things are changing every day, and we're all experiencing that, I just think it would be wise maybe to see where we are as we get closer to May. If you want to maybe open it and see how that works, I mean, I I'm not necessarily saying not to do that, but I don't know if that's necessary. I I mean, I think we may have some issues with doing the public hearing. I know we all spoke about this. We all expressed some views privately about.
You you're just me, you read yourself. And can I ask perhaps to end the screen sharing so we can see bigger pictures of each other?
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you, Tracy.
Hello again.
Yeah.
So I know we stopped the review, but I had one one thought here, you know, and as you get older, the thoughts come slower. But I don't see any any place out here for outdoor barbecue, or, you know, if these folks, it's very constrained. And I'm wondering if you give some thought to places where they might have a picnic table, a place for barbecue, you know, and and put that thinking into.
Yeah, we'll do that. I think that's something that we've always thought about, and and there's enough room there for two or three separate areas for some private outdoor space as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So get back to scheduling.
Right. I mean, so I would like to, I think, well, first of all, I think one of the things we've been, we should consider doing is referring this both to Accarc and to the building inspector. So I think I do that. We do that by consensus. May. Does anyone have any objections to? Okay, so so I guess I should say it the other way. Do I have to, Judd, do I have to pull for this consensus?
Why don't you? I would I would, given the given the way we're operating, just pull and if we have a consensus, then to do so, yes.
So I'm looking for agreement to refer this application to the both the building inspector and Accarc. So Maureen?
Hi.
And Rich?
Hi.
Greg?
No, I think it's a little early to do that.
Okay, Jerome?
Hi.
Judd, we don't have consensus. What do we do?
Well, do you
No, I mean, consensus means basically a majority expression of the board.
Okay, it's not 100%. Okay, then then I think we will go and Okay, it's not 100%. Okay, then, then I think we will go and, um, Kirsten, we will.
It's a, it, neither action requires a formal motion. It's, it's just.
Okay, so I think the sense of the board is that we will forward these to, um, or refer them to both ACCARC and the, and the, um, building inspector. I think, um, the next question is if we are going to try to open a public hearing, at least if we don't close it, um, we, would we want to do that at our next meeting in May or would we want to try, because there may be some learning that goes on as far as a public hearing, would we want to schedule it at a, uh, separate meeting?
Well, what does our agenda look like for May right now?
Pretty light.
Well, it has, um, Kirsten mailed it out.
JJE, extension request. Possible other public hearings, Insight Wireless at Vista Firehouse. Not sure if MacArthur and/or Poundridge Stone would be resubmitting. The handlers would be back for their wetland permit. And possibly Verizon Wireless at Vista Fire and Leon LeBe.
Well.
I suggest we combine it, combine it with the meeting.
Combine it with the meeting?
That's my suggestion.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay, so, um, now, do we need, I'm sorry, it's been a while since I've done a public hearing. Do we need a motion to?
Again, we just need a, a, you know, a sense of the board and, and you know, a poll to, to confirm that we'll put it on the agenda for May 19th for public hearing.
Okay, so, um, as Judd suggested, I will poll now to see if we should put the, a public hearing for Mandia on the, our meeting on May 19th. Maureen?
Aye.
Uh, Rich?
Hi, I just like hope that we could keep the balance of our calendar that evening light, so, uh, we have the time that we need to give to it.
Greg?
No, I, I really don't think we should do this on the same night as the rest of the meeting. I mean, we're doing this uh, virtually, so it's not as if people have to, we're all home. So I think, you know, time is something that we have in terms of being able to do another night. Um, I'm just a little leery about the process of having a, a hearing and getting, get to work in the context of the rest of the meeting. So, um, you know, I don't see, I, I, I get that everybody wants to rush this through and I know why. But I don't see why we have to really, you know, I, I don't think it's a good idea to have it on the same night as the meeting. We can have it the night after, the night before, a week later, a week before, but I just don't think that it's, it's going to work out that well if we do it on the same night as our regular meeting.
So you want the public hearing just separate?
Well, I mean, I think we were kicking that around.
I'm, that works.
I would just like to say that, you know, I think the pivotal issue here was the rezoning. And I think as, as, uh, Mrs. Sirianni said a moment, a while ago, uh, that didn't seem to be enough, at least I'm not familiar, Greg, maybe you, you have more insight into local sentiment on it, but didn't seem to be a, any groundswell against it. And we're really not dealing with the, uh, anything other than, uh, the treatment of the site, uh, the four units as a fait accompli and, and if there was no groundswell opposing, repurposing it as residential, well, uh, I don't see much that's going to, uh, come up here, but I could understand.
That, could I ask, um, I, I take your point, both points, Greg and, and Jerome. Can I ask, uh, Judd, or if anyone else wants to chime in on the timing of when we would need to, uh, close a public hearing after, after opening a public hearing? Does the clock start at any point or do we, can we keep it open for how long?
You are not on, it does not start a time clock with regard to this type of application. No.
It's the closing.
So.
Yeah.
Sorry?
It's the closing of the, of the public hearing that starts the clock, not the opening.
So we could in effect, uh, open the public hearing and have several continuances uh, getting to the point of how, how actually is it going to work?
Yeah.
Um, which I'm very sensitive to because I, I don't want to, um, I'm not trying to push this through. Uh, I just want to, um, try to balance, uh, everything, you know, and give the same equal weight to, to all concerns. But I am very sensitive to, uh, Golden's Bridge and give all of the residents an opportunity to opine. So with that, uh, I, I think it's, I think it's okay to open the public hearing, uh, during the next meeting, although I, I am sensitive that it sounds like a, a packed meeting. And I, I, I know how, uh, public hearings go and they can go long into the night, which I don't think, um, I don't think is a, a good way to go.
I would add one thing that, that many of the people, um, in many of the other towns that, that were on this, um, we're talking to, Meg's got a dog with her. Um, and they were, they were, uh, pretty firm in their suggestion that you set a time limit up front so that maybe you give people five minutes or three minutes to talk and that would be my intent. We have had some, um, some public hearings where we've had some very, um, articulate, um, people who have gone on for, um, quite a while, but I think generally we can ask people to get their message across in three minutes or five minutes and see how that, that goes. And again, as you said, we, we do have the opportunity for an extension if it is, um, required. That said, that if people really wanted to, I would, I would, you know, we could aim for May 12th or.
Yeah, I mean, Greg's point is well taken. If we had it the week before, say, May 12th, then we also have the option, but we just, we should just leave it for that and we see how it goes. We see what the part day, participation is. We see who comes to speak and what the issues are concerning that. And we leave ourselves flexibility to open it because it's our first go-around with a, uh, a Zoom public hearing. So let's leave ourselves maximum flexibility once we get it started. Yeah, it goes.
So you're saying do it the week before our regular meeting and do it on May 12th?
Yeah, as Greg was suggesting, and just make that the only item. So, uh, we could just see how that goes.
Maybe not the only item because we also have another public, I expect we will have a public hearing for Insight, so we might want to do that.
Well, I, I've got a problem on the second Tuesday. I've got a commitment.
Okay.
Depends on how. So. I mean, we could do what, like, what Maureen suggested, have it on a meeting night, see how many people show up.
Well, we need.
Limit the time and it may be that nobody shows up or two or three. And, and we're anticipating, uh, you know, a horde of people, which I don't think is maybe the case.
Well, yeah, I, I, I don't think it'll be hordes. Uh, I mean, it'll be probably, you know, uh, limited to, to the neighborhood. I don't, I don't think it'll, it'll, you know, have like more of a wide sweeping impact, but you know, I'd like to at least be able to give those people the opportunity to be heard.
Okay, so I guess we're going back to the 19th, which is our regular meeting. We will try to have it on that date with, um, and we will try to impose some, um, discipline. This will be up to me on a timeline for having the meet, for how long people can talk.
Uh, what if you were to start the, uh, the meeting, uh, on the 19th at, at seven o'clock with the public hearing to start at 7:30 and that way you can clear out some of the more ministerial stuff upfront?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We've done that before.
We've done that before, yeah.
Yeah.
Could I also submit that we, we should be able to control our own fate to a certain degree? For instance, you mentioned Poundridge Stone. They haven't been here back in, in months. So another month of delay and not accepting them for next meeting just because they submit, uh, doesn't mean they have to be on the agenda. Let's, let's be wise about it and control our time and do what's pressing and defer the rest.
Okay, um, so I, we started polling and we got, we got confused. Let me do it again. So right now, the view is we will now have a, um, a meeting on the 19th. We will start with ordinary business at seven, at 7:30, we will start a, uh, a public hearing for Mandia. Um, and so let me poll and see if that gets people's agreement. Maureen?
I agree to that. Aye.
Uh, Rich?
Um, that's, that's fine unless you think that, um, well, normally when people are traveling to work, we would have it like at eight o'clock to give people time to get home. I don't know. I guess that's a non-issue now.
No, we've, we've done it at seven. We did it in the same setup, seven and 7:30. I think that'll be fine.
All right, that's fine.
So that was both Rich and Greg seemed.
Yeah, I would, I, I would agree to starting it off at seven o'clock.
And Jerome?
On the 19th.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, and I'm fine with that too. So we now have a plan. Um, so we will, we will plan to have it, um, in a Zoom format again. We will have, um, the ability to have people join the Zoom meeting and, um, and we will be able to recognize them and have them talk either by video or phone. And the intent will be to limit the amount of time they, um, that any, we're interested in hearing from people.
And, and to have an email.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, as a suggestion, maybe when we advertise it, we put something specific as far as comments being, um, welcomed a period of time in advance, so we can gauge going in, how many people are interested in speaking before.
Rich, yeah, I, that's a good point. And, and because of the, you know, the peculiarity of the, of, of the process, given where we are, I would work with Kirsten and with Michael in preparing the public notice to indicate, you know, the kind of protocol that will be implemented, including receipt of comments beforehand.
Yeah, even if we get, start getting it 10 days, that way it's.
Yeah.
Coming in a face and we could digest them as they come in or.
Judd, Judd, uh, I think maybe we have to think about modifying the standard public hearing sign that we're going to stick in the ground outside, maybe to make reference to the virtual meeting?
Yeah.
Well, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow.
Yeah.
And one of the, just to follow up from one of these things that, actually, it was mostly led by people from Judd's, um, firm. They also talked about making clear that there will be no, no one in attendance at 79 Bauton. So no, it, just because it's a public hearing does not mean that we are going to have any, anything available in our normal, um, facility or normal location. So that'll be, um, that'll have to be stated too.
Must see TV exclusively.
You got it. Okay, um.
Janet, in Friday's Bedford Record Review, I read the public hearing notices from Bedford. And, uh, they're a good guide, so I was going to copy it.
Oh, I think that probably makes sense to share with, um, Michael and around, and so we can use that.
Yeah, call, call me Kirsten. I can, I can assist. Yeah.
Sounds good. Great.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
One thing more before we go. I'm, we, um, we may not close this hearing, but should we ask, um, Jan to start to draft a resolution or are we not comfortable with that?
Oh, we haven't even seen the impact statement. I don't expect it to be much, but I'd like to see that first.
It won't be, it'll be, uh, you know, it's an unlisted action, so we'll have an EAF.
Right.
Part one, I just asked for the part two.
Right. Well, I like to see that.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Jan, this is it. I'll call you tomorrow. I wanted to talk to you and Dave anyways about Barry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to have a separate Zoom meeting with your project team on this and go over the comments. Um, I don't think any of them are going to be project altering.
Okay, fine.
We could work out most of this, um, with a separate call.
Fine, thank you.
Yep.
That'd be great.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very much, everybody. Nice to see everyone.
Bye. Okay, our next meeting is a special use permit review with, uh, for Insight Wireless at Vista Fire Department. This is at 377 Smith Ridge Road, South Salem, New York, um, calendar number 309 PB. It's an application for a special use permit renewal for AT&amp;T and Sprint equipment. Lost some people off of Zoom. Okay, and that I, um, I, unlike the last, um, the last item, I will say that where the public hearing was optional in this, um, I believe a public hearing is required. So we need to talk through what we need to get done to get to that. So Robert, are you, are you?
Good evening, yes.
Yes.
Hi, Rob Gordioso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder on behalf of the applicant.
Great. Um, I think we've received the, um, the application and all of the information. Jan, I don't know if you want to, um, I, comment on.
Just that it was all satisfactory. All the items that we had listed in our prior memo have been addressed. The only thing that, um, I'd like to do, uh, with the applicant's consent is just to, um, conduct a site visit. But all the, the items that we spoke about at the last meeting have all been received, reviewed, and, uh, they're satisfactory.
Okay, could you remind me where we stand on the, um, on the extensions of T-Mobile and Verizon co-locators on this? What?
They joined the application.
They did join.
As requested, um, Verizon, T-Mobile have joined with Sprint next time. Is that right?
No, a-actually, um, Sprint and AT&amp;T joined. Uh, Verizon is not due until, I believe, in September. So they wanted to process separately.
Oh.
If, if you recall, this one was due actually last year when it was originally filed. I just became involved in March.
AT&amp;T and T-Mobile joined though, correct?
Uh, AT&amp;T and Sprint.
And Sprint.
Correct.
Yeah, T-Mobile, I think their deadline is, uh, 2021. So I, that's why I was a little confused about what might be happening. Okay.
Isn't, isn't this application about additional co-locators on an existing pole?
No, it's a, the renewal of an existing facility. There's no new, um, equipment.
And, and, and a hearing is required? I mean, even with the federal laws which give, uh, some, some kind of privilege to, uh, expedite these uh, so quickly. I mean, we didn't even review the, the town poll at, uh, at the LVAC.
That's because the town board did it.
Right, yeah. So could you explain that, Judd? What, what's your.
No, the town board, the town, the town board took that process because it was town-owned property.
I understand that.
Right, so, and we do, we need, we need to conduct a public hearing on the special use permit. Uh, it's a special use permit renewal. It's a public hearing. Uh, my suggestion would be put, we put this on for the 19th and we direct Jan to prepare a resolution.
Yes.
And I'd be, I'd be happy to meet Jan out at the site for the site visit. If any way we can coordinate it with the posting of the sign, that would be great. If not, I'll, I'll make myself available on Jan's schedule.
Yeah.
Widely available.
Okay, so.
Free.
Could you just humor me one more minute? Has it, has there been any objection to this cell tower in, in, in the way it's been maintained or is there any? Is, does the community have any issues with the cell tower? I mean, uh, I, I understand we have to have a hearing, but it just seems to me to be, you know.
The only.
What's the rationale? What's the rationale?
The only reason for the site visit is, um, I want to take a look at the driveway. In prior years, um, there's been some some maintenance that's been needed because it, it crossed a, a wet one. So it's, there was some historical kind of subsidence there. some maintenance that's been needed because it, it crossed a, a, a one. So it's, there was some historical kind of subsidence there.
Right.
So I'll take a peek at that. No, I don't know of any community, uh, issues at all, but it's, it's built into, you know, these renewals are built into your, your historic resolution. Irresolutions, right.
Right, but without exceptions.
What's that?
Without exception?
No, every five years they need to renew the permit. That's, was based on your original approval.
All right, okay.
Could we ever do a longer or shorter renewal? I mean, or is it a five years that statute?
I, I'd have to look at that. There, there may be some flexibility there. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head though. I'll, I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Well, I, I would like to, um, poll and see if we can get, because I take your point, Jerome, and I do not expect much public comment, if any, but I think we, um, we are required to have a public hearing and I think it makes sense to sort of do it on the same night and move this along as expeditiously as we can. So I'm going to ask everybody, um, if they agree to have the public hearing on the May 19th and if they agree that we can ask Jan to draft a resolution for that evening. So Maureen?
I agree. Yay.
Rich?
Hi.
Greg?
I agree.
Um, Jerome?
I agree.
And I do also agree. Okay, so, um, that looks like what our plan is.
Great. Thank you very much for your time tonight. And I really do appreciate you going the extra effort with these Zoom, Zoom meetings. It's, uh, much appreciated. Thank you.
Well, it's an interesting process for us all, but we're learning. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Janet, if, if we determine that there's flexibility in the code, do you want us to look into altering the time period? To, or potentially expanding it?
What? I, um, I would, I would certainly, I mean, I can understand the first few times that we have it. We want to make sure things are, you know, nothing new comes up, but this has now been here for, um, 10 years. And we've seen it, this is the third time. Um, I would certainly think about maybe seven years or 10 years. I don't know. I mean, I, and I would leave that to the discretion of the board and to, you know, I, whether, and your views too. I mean, it's something that have to happen that that we would need to have a renewal more, you know, more frequently.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking more frequently.
No, no, I meant more than like seven years or 10 years. You know, do we need to stick with five?
We'll take a look at it and I'll kind of leave that open ended, um, in the draft resolution and we could, uh, revisit that when we meet again in, uh, next.
And I don't know, Judd, any, any views on? You're muted, I think.
Yeah, I'm muted. I'm actually trying to bring up the code right now.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't think we have to decide tonight, but I, I just throw that out as an idea.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Rob.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Okay.
Yeah, be safe. Okay, um, we have next on the agenda, a discussion of planning board guidelines. Um, I did put incorporated, I think, a couple of changes that Greg had suggested. You know, this is not an urgent thing, but it's, um, it's basically cleaned up. So if we want to look at that, um, or any more comments on it?
No comment.
So I think we can just, um, move to accept these.
That would be a motion, yes.
Yes. So I need a motion from someone?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'll second Maureen's motion.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All right, I'm going to do the poll. Maureen?
Aye.
Rich?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Jerome?
Hi.
And I also am in favor. So the, the, we now have a new set of planning board guidelines. Um, I have to say they aren't really addressing all of what we do today in Zoom, but, um, maybe we'll get back to normal soon enough. Uh, correspondence is the next item. Um, we have, we got a referral from Richfield, Connecticut on, uh, well, it came to the town board who then sent it to us. It basically is a few changes to stormwater management. Um, they actually had, had, had timing, then asked for it earlier, but they've canceled all their May meeting, or sorry, all their April meetings. So if we have any opinions on it, I'd like to just ask Jan to, you know, summarize what it said and if there's anything we should know from it.
I don't think there's, I had read it, uh, a few weeks ago. There was no, nothing of significance in there uh, that I saw that was going to impact, um, this row or the way we operate. Uh, I didn't, I didn't spend a ton of time with it. It's a, you know, mandatory referral that they have to make, uh, to the town. Um, I don't think it impacts us.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I noticed is they took roofs and sort of divided them and said, if you have a green roof, roof, it can count as, as pervious instead of impervious. And that seemed to be the net of it. So what I would like to do is, um, if you all agree, send a note to the town board that says basically we have no comment on the Richfield uh, amendment of their miscellaneous provisions of the town code. Okay, so I guess I have to poll for that. Maureen?
Aye.
Rich?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
And Jerome?
Hi.
And I'm okay with that too. So that's a work item, um, that we will just, uh, work with Kirsten and just send a quick item there. Okay, the next item are the minutes of March 17th, um, 2020, which really is the transcript of, pretty much the transcript of the meeting with a few, um, additions that make it make sense. It puts in the, um, items and the descriptions of the items we are talking about.
Motion to approve the March minutes.
Thank you, Rich.
Second that.
Thank you, Jerome. Any discussion? Okay, the poll. Maureen?
Aye.
Rich?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Jerome?
Hi.
And I'm in favor too. So we have minutes. All right. So the next meeting will be May 19th, 2020. Um, and we may have us, we will work on a slightly different arrangement in order to enable the participation of the public. Um, I don't know, Jerome, uh, anybody have any comments about that? We will, we will publicize it and make sure we, people know exactly how it's going to be. So with that, I will look for.
Can I just a quick, just a quick, uh, housekeeping thing with regard to the sequence? Do you want to do the insight public hearing first? If we anticipate that to go relatively quickly?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, we have it set that we were doing some preliminary matters at seven.
Yeah, so.
This could probably be a preliminary matter.
Or it could be, I mean, I really don't think it's going to take very long. So if we put it on, even if we did it at seven 30, it would be over by seven 35.
I, I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Is it possible that once we do the hearing on the Mandia property that that's it? That would be the end of the meeting?
We have Hannah coming back.
Oh, okay. Well, well, we can't squeeze that in at, at seven?
Yeah.
Hannah, you probably can at seven.
Well, I, the question would be, are we going to get, um, I don't, have we gotten anything from, um, McArthur's? No.
No.
They have until the 28th though, I think, right?
I haven't, I haven't heard from them since the last meeting. I don't suspect they're submitting. I think I would have heard something.
Man, they, they were asking me if the ZBA meeting was on, so that's all I know about. And I did tell them to come to you. Um, well, I mean, we can certainly try to go quickly through the first part of the meeting and then.
That's what I was going to suggest, that if it's another, I mean, I don't think we exactly started, remember we did those public hearings on, uh, I guess it was the Wilder Balter. We didn't exactly start at seven 30, but if we had it, we just on for the rest of the night.
Yeah.
And you know, then that's the way it's laid out.
Yeah.
So you're saying.
Make it eight o'clock.
Well, tell them seven 30 and then they'll, you know.
I think you do, I think you schedule both one, maybe one for seven 30 and one for seven 45, something like that.
That's good.
Okay. And then, I mean, if we have stuff to do, uh, we might be anticipating a lot more public comments than we will get and we will do our best to get through everything.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
You know, my, my concern with any of these hearings is that we're going to see complaints that people are saying they didn't get a real chance to do it because of the system. You know, and even if it's two people, because I think we had that in, in Mercedes, they, you know, they were complaining about the, the system itself. So tha- that's, that's what I think is going to happen, even if it's a few amount of people. So.
And I, I think the other thing we could always do is say that we welcome, um, as we've done in the past, we welcome public comment for or written comment, you know, we hold open for written comment for the next.
Yeah.
You know, I'm.
Well, actually, don't we have an opportunity if somebody, I don't know, technologically, if somebody instead of, um, sending an email wanted to say, make a YouTube video as far as a presentation that that we, we could, that could be shown.
Yeah, they could handwrite a letter.
That.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're going to break one. Everybody have the, yeah, three minutes.
Stay on the YouTube, yay.
Yeah, we would have to figure out, um, you know, that's, uh, Kirsten and I might be practicing a few more times to try to figure out how to broadcast.
I mean, I mean, the point, the point.
Is this, is, is this, is tonight's thing going to be up on YouTube or is it going to be taken right down?
I believe it will stay up.
So we could probably put, we could probably make re- reference to the public hearing in, in, you know, in, in the detail section. Maybe in the comments section, right underneath, you could talk about that too.
Okay.
And maybe someone, maybe someone will, will, will venture on to look at how this worked out and then maybe they'll be okay with the, with the system or the process.
Judd.
It's a little behind, you know, what we do. If you're following us, uh, live on Zoom, we're about five to 10 seconds behind on YouTube. So that could be a little confusing also.
YouTube is, is a delay of YouTube, like five or 10?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's three seconds. I don't know, but it's definitely a delay.
That's in cases, any obscenities.
In eight years, I think I've heard one obscenity at, at a planning board meeting. Nine years, I don't think I've heard one obscenity at a planning.
Oh, I've heard a few. I make a motion for adjournment.
Sorry.
Second, I'll second that.
Okay.
Wait, wait, I've sort of missed it. So Jerome motion to adjourn.
Second by Greg.
Gregory's second and Kirsten has a question.
He wants to discuss it.
Back of the public hearing and typically the hearing notice says, come to my office and look at the file.
Yeah.
Have you heard how that is handled? Am I?
Well.
Don't we have, isn't it all pub, isn't it all in the, uh?
It's in the agenda packet. I think we will, we'll refer them, we'll refer them to the, uh, to what's posted on the website. And the, you know, tonight's agenda packet.
Sure.
Or maybe set up a link like.
Or maybe we could do a separate, yeah, it, it's a good point, Kirsten. Maybe we can set up a separate, uh, you know, you know, just a separate, like, like we have with some of the other, uh, applications.
I have an idea. Send them up to Michael Sereniano's office. He has the plan there.
Still can't, quite social distance. All right. So we have an approach for that. Let me now, um, I guess poll for adjournment. Maureen?
Aye.
Rich?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Jerome?
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
Okay, me too. So, thank you. Um, I think we got through another one. So, um, everybody stay safe and, uh, we'll talk.
Yes, absolutely.
Everyone else. Thank you. Good job.
Good evening.
Wait a minute, I usually close my Zoom meetings with a poetry reading.
I'm up for that.
Of a really long poem, right?
I'll click out when I get bored.
That's okay. I'll pass.
All right.
Okay.
See you at all.
Good. So I don't.